He'll be doing both. The fire and the bus.
I'm texting those days.
Is he in the back?
Mm-hmm. Yes, he's going to.
Nope. Is he moving from the front to the back?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here. Before we begin, actually, two things. Silence your cellphones, please, and then let's all stand for Pledge of Leashes.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yui, you have some words for us?
I do, as soon as I shut my cellphone.
Okay.
Okay, I promise, the next time I come, whether the hammering stops or not at Village Hall, I'm going to talk about Roxanna Beecher School, okay? Where we have an embroidery piece that was done at that school, which we will be bringing to Village Hall when the hammering stops. But I'm going to talk about it next time, anyway, because the house should not be just called the Lyman Beecher House. It should be the Roxanna and Lyman Beecher and Hand House. I'm going to give you a brief history of it today. This is available, and I will bring one at the next board meeting. You can get a Brief History of our Village Hall. It was done by former Historic Site Director Avril Geist. These are at Village Hall, as you can go into the reception area. We have them at Home Sweet Home, and I will be bringing them to the next town board meeting to pass out to people if they want them. As you know, there was a doctor named Samuel Hutchinson who came to East Hampton. He married Parsons, and when he died, we don't know if he built the current Village Hall or it was there. I don't think we've been able to ascertain it. It's probably a mid-18th-century house, like Home Sweet Home. But when Dr. Hutchinson died, he gave the house to his 11-year-old son, Eli, and then by 1800, Eli sells it to Lyman Beecher for $1,800. And we have that transaction framed, and that's going to be going upstairs in between the village administrator and the mayor's office, and they can fight over it, okay? Okay. So he sells it for $800 to Lyman Beecher, who has to make $300 worth of repairs. And remember, there were no stores here. So Beecher has to get the family all their furniture from the city, okay? And when he leaves in 1810, Lyman Beecher, he sells it to Abraham Hand. And then the Hand family spent a lot of time at our current Village Hall. And George Hand inherited the place when his uncle died, and he's the one who added the building to the back of the house, which was the post office. It was one of the first post offices in East Hampton. That building has been removed, and it's still standing today within the village. I'm not going to tell you where. Don't go there, okay? Okay. Now, George Hand, in 1861, they put up a Liberty Pole between the Hunting House and the Gardener House, right there on Main Street, a flagpole. And they had a big ceremony, and George Hand was important enough at that time to be the secretary of that meeting. So a report of the meeting appeared in the Sag Harbor Express, and I think it was probably written by George Hand, all right? So that's that. And one last thing, oh, wait a minute. Two last things, all right. Alex McCourt of the East Hampton Middle School has formed a village history club. And what she's going to do is she's going to be taking on her students. After-school, this is after-school club, we will be visiting seven or eight historic places in the village, starting with Village Hall. The class then will put a booklet together that can be given to students and others so they could do their own walking tour of important historic places in the village, like Home Sweet Home, the Thomas Moran House, their own schoolhouse, the 1924 school, which was the high school for many of us. So, and when they get done, I hope they hope to come here and make a presentation to the board, okay? So that's part of the 100th anniversary, and thank Alex and her class. And finally, finally, I spend a lot of time on James Lane, okay? And the stop signs have slowed people down. The only ones who don't slow down are the ones who go right through it.
Thank you, Yui. I'm sure that the chief is going to address the second matter there. Okay, so we've changed our format here a bit, as you know, so we're allowing for public comment in the beginning of the meeting from now on, and we'll see how that goes. So I would ask anybody that wants to address the board to please address the board, except for those that are here for our specific presentations. We'll get to those in a minute. So anybody that has something that they want to address the board about in general nature or a complaint, if anybody wants to do that, I would ask you to do it this time. Well, yours is going to be about the, okay, we're going to do that next, all right? Anybody that has a comment about anything they want to talk about, about a general nature I'm going to do with the village. Okay, so we're good there. I'm going to go out of order a little bit, because I know we have some people here from businesses that want to get back to their business. So I think first we'll talk about the Chamber of Commerce Spring Festival. Little background, as you know, we've been doing this for several years. A few times, we closed down Newtown Lane to have the festival. Many people thought it was a success. We've since learned in conversations with business owners, in some cases, it was not such a success, and maybe we could do it differently. So we had decided that we were going to move it to Herrick Park, which has also been very successful. But it's at a time of year when it's not very productive for some of our business owners who have expressed a concern to us about it. Now, somebody from the Chamber of Commerce was supposed to be here today but couldn't be here today, and I know that from their website, it says that it's been scheduled for May 16th. I just want to say that they have not put in an application for a permit for May 16th, so we won't be able to vote on anything today. But since it was up for discussion, and I know some business people that were concerned wanted to talk about it, so we're still going to have the discussion about it, and then we can sit down with them some future date very shortly and iron this out. There may be some confusion, I don't know, but I do know that our last discussions with the chamber were very specific about a couple of things. That it could be very disruptive to some businesses in May, and your board is sensitive to that, and we definitely did not want to have it on Mother's Day weekend. It was my understanding that we also discussed that it wouldn't be at least, you know, past the, it wouldn't happen past the first week in May, albeit maybe some people were confused and just concentrated on the fact that we didn't want it on Mother's Day weekend. But it's also come to our attention that it's a problem for certain businesses unless it is at some point before Mother's Day weekend. So that's what we're here to discuss today. So anybody that has any comments, I would call on you to come to the podium, please, and speak to us. All right, thank you. Don, just state your name and everything when you get to the podium. Thank you.
Don Horowitz, co-owner of Whitten Dale's Florist and Greenhouses. And as our mayor had said, it, there's a lot of history behind this. There's some good for it. There's some businesses that think it's a windfall for business, and others are impacted quite a bit. It came to my attention, looking on Facebook, that they put out a published advertisement about May 16th, and I was like, that's the weekend after Mother's Day, and it's like, where's the discussion? I didn't hear anything. And then I found out today that the chamber really has not discussed it, just advertised, which was surprising. Whitten Dale's Florist and Greenhouse is a very seasonal business, like so many, but we are more impacted because the month of May and June, we do 60% of our business in two months, yet we're open year-round. And even though we're not really doing any significant business in January and even February, not counting Valentine's, we're open year-round because we're a community business, and we feel it's important to be open whether we're truly making money or not. We employ about 10 people a year-round, and part of the reason I can keep people over the winter is that extra maximizing the profits during the busy season when people choose to come in to buy plant material. And having a fair can impact that. There's some great aspects about the fair, but it seems to be the right place and the right date. And as I say, in May, we do so much of our business. I figured out the month of December, from the day after Thanksgiving till Christmas Eve, all that Christmas business doesn't even equal one week in May. That's how crucial the month of May is to Whitten Dale's. We find that the parking situation, people come, the chamber talks about creating business, but for us and so many other businesses feel the way you can create business is allow the customers to be able to come to the village and park. And we have a very fragile parking situation. It is what it is. But by having a fair and bringing more cars to the area can help the fair, but it pushes other people from shopping in the area who choose to go to a brick-and-mortar store on Main Street and Newtown Lane. And even though the chamber says East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, so much of it is really, are they concerned about the Chamber of Commerce or the commerce happening in Newtown Lane and Main Street? Those people, including myself, between paying rent or mortgages and taxes, we need the street to be open. We need parking to be available for our customers who choose to come into our stores. And having the fair in a really busy season for me, which is Mother's Day and the two weekends after, and even June, can impact the parking. So to me, having it before we're busy is very, very important. Whitten Dale's is 99 years old this year and vitaled. It was vitaled from 1921 to '82, and Whitten Dale started in 1983. In 1983, I joined the Chamber of Commerce, and we were a member of the chamber up until last year. And when all this came down with the fair coming, it was like, you know, is the chamber advocating for me? And I felt hurt. They really weren't. I was told, you're only one entity. And because of that, it was like, well, the chamber isn't really helping me, and I chose not to rejoin after 37 years. And even now, the chamber has not reached out, Donald, would you like to rejoin, other than just you can sign up on the website. Nobody came into my store to talk and address about the fair, how is it affecting us? So there again, there's no communication from the chamber, or even trying to get us to become members again, which I find a little bit shocking. It just seemed that the village board seemed to be more of an advocate for the businesses on Main Street and Newtown Lane than the Chamber of Commerce, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Just state your name, please.
Good morning. My name is Valerie Smith, and I just wanted to thank you all for your service. I know sometimes things can get thorny, and this may be one of them, but whatever. I am really not here as a business owner, as I own the monogram shop in the village, as much as I am a very lucky village resident. Like all of you, I treasure the heritage and traditions and beauty of this village, and I think it's one of the, it's a national treasure. And I think we have to do everything we can to make sure that the highest standards are upheld. I don't know how many of you went to, I've only seen two of these fairs, the one in December and the previous one in May, and the only way I can describe it is it looked like it should have been on Second Avenue. It's just a lot of junk. And I think we all know that the gold standard for fairs in this village is the LVIS Fair, which has been a beloved thing in all of our lives forever and ever. I think whatever is done by the chamber or by anybody else should look to that as their example of how things are done properly and beautifully and consistently with the way our village should be represented. I have no objection to the idea of darling, wonderful, community fair. I think it's a great thing, but I think this whole chamber situation has to be rethought and reimagined as something much more consistent with, consistent with and representative of our village. In addition to business owners being impacted by the fairs, village residents, who are most, for the most part, so many of them just here on weekends, who wanted to dart into the village and buy a last-minute Christmas present or a box of paper towels, they couldn't do it. The back parking lot was closed on a December Saturday, the third one before Christmas, and cones were up and down Newtown Lane on a Saturday before Christmas. I mean, it's retail homicide, and it's taxpayer homicide. They can't function in their own village and do the simple stop-and-shop and Cinderella things that they want to do in advance of dinner tonight, you know? So I think that was a real problem and something that should never be duplicated, and you guys have been really good about listening to what we had to say, and I appreciate it. I think the last thing is that we survive, as Donald has pointed out, really from May until barely December. I think that what the chamber keeps saying is that they're trying to revitalize and inject energy and excitement into the village. Well, the time that that energy and excitement is needed is in March and in April and in February, when they could inject anything they like into the village, and it would not be a problem for anybody, not the village residents and not the village business owners. I think a great example is whatever they do, I've never been to it, but I've heard it's wonderful in Sag Harbor. They have something in the middle of February, and people spend the entire day there. This argument that weather, you know, that we've got to wait till the pretty weather in May for the chamber to have their razzmatazz show is nonsense. If we want to keep things rolling in the village, arrange things during February, March, and April when things are so incredibly slow. So, thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any board members want to respond?
Yeah, I would like to say, I was always under the impression that the Chamber of Commerce was putting it on for their members. And frankly, when I looked at the list of who the members of the chambers of commerce are, I was surprised. I think that the Chamber of Commerce is putting this on for the Chamber of Commerce, not for their members. And frankly, if I wanted to go to an up-island craft fair, I would go to one up-island. I think that the stuff that they have in 90% of the booths is, you know, my wife and I walk down to the fair and walk around and look at all the stuff, and we kind of say to ourselves, why are we coming? Why are we here? You know, I think that if there were local crafts or, you know, in Greenwich, Connecticut, they have a sidewalk sale where the stores are encouraged to put stuff on the street that brings people into the stores, you know, so they have the sale outside, and by the way, come look at what we have inside. That might be a little bit more business-friendly. But I think the way these fairs are going now, I am not in favor of it at all.
Okay. Rose, anybody else? Barbara?
Well, I mean, we, you and I sat with them, Rose and I have sat with the chamber and tried to explain to them from the very beginning that we wanted a higher quality of goods, and it seems to be falling on deaf ears. So I'm not sure how we want to move forward. I certainly don't want it to be from Mother's Day forward, if they'll agree to do something and keep it in Herrick Park so the street is open. I would consider it, but I think we should encourage them once again to look at what they're doing and try to do something about improving the quality of what they're doing.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, I agree that I'd like to hear more from the community. And of course, you know, Donald and Valerie, we value your business in the district, especially as an owner-operated business, and certainly, we don't want to do things that will be detrimental to your business. You know, we were approached by the chamber to do some of these things under the auspices that it would be revitalizing and add some vibrancy. And there are many elements of the fairs that are very enjoyable, I think, for the community, especially those who are school-aged and have young children and so forth, and there are a lot of not-for-profit groups that are represented there as well. We did meet with some store owners, such as those that spoke today, and we did agree that we do not want to negatively impact their business, and we would try to work around some of their concerns, such as the dates and, you know, bringing the street fair from the street on Newtown to the park. So, you know, we've heard from some shop owners. I think that, you know, we need some more information to hear from everyone. You know, I don't believe it's our agenda that we should be representing, but it's the majority of the village and what the village residents want and the village businesses want. So I think we need to hear more from that before we make a decision going forward. And I, too, was surprised when I saw that the chamber had posted about the spring fair on May 16th and right away. You know, I emailed the board and said, do, you know, what is going on with this? Because it was alarming. It was right in between, it was after Mother's Day, but the weekend before Memorial Day, which, you know, we understand would be a problem. And so I think we need to hear from the chamber. Unfortunately, they weren't able to be here today, so I think we should hit the pause button and have them come back.
Totally.
Agreed. I just want to say that, and I think people realize this, your board is not unfriendly to business. We want to do what we can to help business. We'd like a consensus. I mean, if these fairs are not working, then they're not working. They become very costly for us as village government to ensure that safety of people when they're here and closing down the streets. If that money can be better spent in another manner in which to help business, then we would certainly want to do that. So I think it's encouraging that we're starting to have a little bit more dialogue here between local business owners and the Chamber of Commerce. I will say this, that I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt and say that there might have been a misunderstanding, but I do believe that we were very clear, very clear, that we wanted to make sure that everybody was on board with this, and it's very apparent after today that they're not. So as I said, and I also want to remind people that, as Valerie said, we are at least 85% residential in this village, so we don't want to snub business. We don't want to do anything that's going to make it harder for them to make a living, but we also have to think about our village residents and what they want. So I think we have a little bit more work to do as we go forward. I'm not saying that we should eliminate them, but I think that through discussion, we can make it better. And I think we have improved this in the fact that we were moving it to Herrick Park so we don't have to close the street. But again, the time is a little bit off, and if we can make a time that would be more amenable to everybody, then I think that that's what we should do. So we're not going to vote on anything today. There's nothing to vote on, because they haven't presented us with an application yet. So I think that we've got some ideas here. I think we've given our ideas about this, and we'll wait to meet with the chamber and see what we do from there. We're not going to do anything without speaking to business owners, and in fact, it's been all of our thoughts that we intend to reach out a little bit more to business owners. But I also want to remind everybody, we have a Facebook page, which is going to be active on Friday. We have our village website with all of our emails on it. There's always the telephone. We're eager to hear from our village residents and our village businesses about what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong, so that we can improve on it. That's what we're here for. I think coming up, we're going to have another discussion about retail food stores and allowing 16 seats there. I think that's going to be very helpful to the village core, to keep people there and interactive with businesses in the village, and I look forward to that sort of thing happening. Again, I also want to address the fact of signage. We've had some complaints about signage. I think we could do some work on that, too, and in fact, we are. We're vetting that through the Planning and Zoning Committee now, and hopefully, we'll have some decisions out of that that would be more amenable to the business district. So there'll be more to that in the coming near future. So, thank you very much. And I think, does anybody else have anything to say while we're on this subject? Anybody else like to address us? Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. So we'll wait to hear from the Chamber of Commerce before we do anything further on this. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. Okay, so next up, again, a little bit out of order, but zoning code retail food stores. Is Billy here? Billy, could you just give us a little summary of what we discussed in Planning and Zoning
Good morning, Board of Trustees. Billy Hayjack on behalf of the village. So you have a proposal before you that would make some modifications to the zoning code that would essentially redefine food-related retail stores within the commercial district of the village. There's some pretty simple changes, but I think we feel that they would have some pretty dramatic results. And this really stems from a request by a few business owners to allow certain seating within food retail stores. So it's a response to some current operations. And what we've developed is a proposal that would allow up to 16 seats within food-related retail stores. It doesn't change the underlying retail component or retail use of the facility, but what it does do is allow a limited number of convenience seats where people can get a cup of coffee or a sandwich or salad and sit down and enjoy it in the facility or outside the facility on their property. And it's a, there's a Health Department rule that allows up to a certain number of seats without triggering it as a restaurant, and the draft law is written in a way that it flies under the radar of the Health Department's rules. So it doesn't trigger, you know, a change to a restaurant, but there are some limitations in that the facility can't have waitstaff, it can't operate as a restaurant. It's more of a convenience to allow folks to enjoy their beverages or, you know, lunch in the facility without it being a restaurant. So this was vetted through the Planning and Zoning Committee. Some changes were made based on that conversation, and there's, Beth has prepared a proposed local law which implements the changes. So if you have any questions for me, I can try to answer them.
I think it looks great. I think it's a good step.
I think it's a great step, too. I think it's going to have a significant impact on the vibrancy of the business district, and I'm happy to support it and that we're going forward with it. You mentioned that it's 16 seats, Billy. How does the calculation up to 16 seats? How does the calculation get determined as far as, you know, one store might be one size and they can have, you know, is it per square footage as far as how many seats they can have in their establishment? Is it based on fire code?
Well, yeah, the law is going to allow up to 16 seats, whether or not, whether or not there's physical room for it. That's something that's going to be decided by the occupancy rating of the building and the arrangement.
So that's up to the Building Department to determine that?
Yeah, that would be, yep. So, I mean, they might have to move some things around to fit a certain number of seats. They might not fit up to 16 seats and still comply with the occupancy. That's going to be a decision that they'll have to make when they're laying things out internally.
This is excellent, and I'm happy to see that we're going forward with it. Thank you for your work on it.
Billy?
Also, I recall in talking about this, there were requirements that in order to get a Suffolk County health approval to do this 16-seat thing, there had to be septic upgrades on the properties. Is that?
Well, to be a food, to be like a delicatessen or a pizzeria, you have to obtain Health Department approval for that. So there's a food handler's permit that a business must obtain. When you're getting your food handler's permit, they look at the facility, they ensure that the facility and, you know, the building meets current Health Department standards. And so if you have a dry retail store, you know, selling shoes, and you want to turn it into a deli with 16 seats, the Health Department is going to require you to ensure that the facility has a grease trap, that it meets the sanitary calculations and whatnot. So if you have an existing food retail store, chances are you could add up to your 16 seats without any further review. But if you're a dry store, you might have to, you know, approach the Health Department and secure approval to ensure your sanitary facility is up to snuff.
And that's under the current code, just to clarify, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's currently required. That's currently required.
It just doesn't have the seating component to it.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions? Thank you, Billy.
Sure.
Anybody in the audience, any questions? Anybody?
So this will go to hearing?
Yeah. I just want, Gusty, did you want to say something?
Sure. Not giving you a chance to say something.
Gusty folks, do you actually have a definition of what Billy just...
Yes.
Can you read it, or...
Sure.
Oh, great.
May I have that?
Okay. Oh, okay, very good. All right, so the next step, I just want to say this, it was received very favorably at the Planning and Zoning Committee. We decided at that point that if it was over the board, that it should move forward to a public hearing. So, do I have a consensus that we should notice this for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Thank you very much.
So...
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so we'll have the public hearing at the March, regular March meeting?
We'll notice it.
Notice it at the March meeting?
Notice it at the March meeting. It'll be the public hearing in April. Correct, Becky?
Mm-hmm.
All right, yeah. So, we'll notice our next meeting, public hearing at the meeting in April.
Okay.
There's a process. Unfortunately, these things take a little longer than some of us would like, but...
I was wondering if there isn't a way to do it any faster for people who would like to get this up for the summer. Is it possible to notice it now for the public hearing? Or can we have the public hearing at the work session in April if we notice it in March? No, it's not enough time.
I think you need five days.
I don't know if it's enough time.
It's got to be in the star, and then you need...
Between you notice it and you're publishing and laid on your desks for a certain number of time. You have to physically look at the calendar. I don't know if there would be enough time with noticing.
Okay, so I would say this, if there is enough time, then we would do it that way, okay?
So, have the public hearing at the works, the board's next work, at the first April meeting?
So, we couldn't notice it today for a public hearing at the next meeting?
No, you can't.
Resolution.
Yeah, you need a resolution to do it.
I think you could notice it on the twentieth for the April work session.
Why don't we do that?
So, we could have the, yeah, that's what we were saying. So, we'll have, we'll notice it on the twentieth, and we'll have the hearing on the April work session, correct?
Right, not the April regulars.
And we could vote on it that day, provided there's positive support. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we'll have, that's better.
We could do it, we could do it the first, we could do it the first work session in April.
Okay.
And have a vote on it.
That would be...
I'll just...
Okay. Jerry, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I have a question real quick. The, I'm just, I have a copy of the law that I just received, and it says that you can have up to sixteen seats to eat within or outside. So, does outside, would that include public property, or is that just private property?
Private.
So, like, if you use Mary's, for example, she can have no seats outside, correct?
With this proposal, yes.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
All right. All right, so next on the agenda, discussion of the coastal assessment resiliency plan. Becky, could you give us...
Billy, I don't know if you want to add anything. The board has a memo regarding the coastal assessment resiliency plan, which is actually a plan that's being developed by the town of East Hampton. Back in two thousand and seventeen, the town approached the village to present an opportunity for the village to be part of the town's plan, as obviously the village has a large number of homes and public infrastructure along the shoreline. The village agreed to participate for a minimal cost. At the time, it was twelve thousand five hundred dollars. The town's cost for their entire townwide study is about two hundred thousand dollars. The town had engaged one consultant, who was actually no longer working for them, so that's why this process has taken so long. The village didn't get far enough along in the process with the first consultant to where we are now, which is why this is coming to the village at this point. So, after changing consultants and going through their lengthy RFP process once again, the town did engage a second consultant, GZA consultants, who is out of Massachusetts, that are working on developing the plan for them. And you have an outline of what the plan is going to produce. The plan examines flooding and erosion risks, storm vulnerability, and expected degree of recovery for the infrastructure in those locations. It would also want to spread the understanding of coastal hazards facing the village. The plan will also look at existing policies and regulations relating to coastal areas and either provide some recommendations, suggestions to either improve or additional regulation that may be helpful to the village. They will use, have a sample of the focus area that they did for one of the areas in the town in Montauk, so you can see that the type of proposal that they'll be putting forth, and again, that they will be examining the village shoreline as a whole, again, public and private property. Again, so the village will not have its own separate plan, but the village will be a part of the town's plan, and the draft plan will be subject to a public meeting that the village will be involved in as well. So, this is to, the new consultant has agreed to incorporate the village at the cost of thirteen thousand dollars. This has been something that has been budgeted. The village has been carrying it over since the initial agreement, so if the board is in, you know, obviously in agreement to move forward, then the town can execute their agreement with the consultant to go ahead and include the village.
Okay, very good. Any comments from the board?
We have to do it, of course.
Any comments from anyone else? Billy, do you have anything to add, or you... Okay, all right, very good. All right, so, yeah, then let's move forward with that. Thank you. Next, Georgia, Georgia Beach Wi-Fi and flagpole. Captain?
Good morning, Board. Tony Wong, captain of the Boost Department. So, I was asked by the chief and Becky to take a look at some options for Wi-Fi up at Georgia Beach, similar to what we did up at Main Beach. And working with Ed over at East End Computers, we came up with some proposals based on, we had some concerns about where the antennas would be placed and the visual impact. So, working with Ed, we came up, I actually printed out some color pictures, because I know your packet has...
I love pictures.
I looked at the packet, and I didn't really know what I was looking at, so...
We're trying to save on ink.
Get Village Hall a color printer.
Mine's color.
So, we found two locations that, actually, two locations that we could place antennas without really visually impacting the vista up at the beach. So, one of the antennas would be placed at the peak of the larger Georgia Coast Guard Station facing the beach, and it would be placed on the outside of the building and really would not be noticeable unless you were looking for it. I think everybody's pretty much familiar with the antennas that are up at Main Beach, and if you're not, that's because they're there and you really don't see them. Similar antennas would be placed up at, Georgia Beach, one on the building, actually, two on the building. One would face the parking lot to cover the grass area and give us coverage up there, and then the other one would face the beach, pointing out towards the beach, and give us partial coverage on the beach. And then we would need, for full coverage at the beach, we'd need a second antenna, which we have proposed to the board to place, and if you look at your map, I, well, yeah, I want to just point out to you where, because this map actually has it. I placed the blue dot where we're actually thinking about and tested. Ed, when he plotted, had plotted it a little bit further here, but we're actually proposing it where the blue dot is.
Okay.
Which is even, there's a pine tree there, and it kind of camouflages. So, what we're proposing is a wooden pole for just a, just a straight telephone pole, basically, that would be right next to the pine tree and just have an antenna on top of that. And that would kind of cover the other section of the beach that we would miss with the building. And the reason is, there's a dune, I think I've made the red circle on there.
Yes.
So, that's a high point at the beach, and it blocks those antennas, so we need the two to kind of get around that dune. If we go, I know Dave and I were talking, the superintendent of Public Works, we were talking about pole heights, and I know he's specked in here. Put my binoculars on. Yeah, he's got his thirty-foot wood pole. Obviously, some of that will be in the ground, so we're, what are we, right around twenty-five feet, twenty, twenty-five? Twenty feet. That will get us enough coverage to cover that other section of the beach, to get around these blockages, really, that would stop the Wi-Fi.
So, you're not talking about a flagpole now, because it...
Well, that's up to us.
Yeah, that's...
That is still a possibility. It's us to determine...
I like that.
Yeah, I originally had thought, first of all, just circling back to the Wi-Fi, I think it's a great idea. We did it at Main Beach. I know it was a little bit easier. You know, this is a little bit more of a challenge because the buildings are further back from the area we want to provide the service. And, you know, I think we're all concerned about any negative visual impact, and certainly a twenty-foot pole, you know, telephone pole perhaps, like that size, it might be less attractive than a flagpole. And at Main Beach, they use a flagpole, you know, to fly the American flag, obviously. Maybe this year, they'll also fly the village flag with our new seal, and they also inform the public about the surf conditions. And I think it would really be great if we could use a flagpole to incorporate some of the wiring for the Wi-Fi, and we could also put a flagpole at Georgia. I was kind of surprised that we didn't have a flagpole at Georgia. And it would be nice to fly, you know, all the flags and the surf conditions. It wouldn't have to be lit at night, because the beach staff, just as they do at Main Beach, could take the flags down at the end of the day and then put them back up in the morning. But it also could allow us to provide the Wi-Fi with, you know, the proper wiring and so forth through the pole mechanism in some way, and also, it would be really attractive, and it would serve many purposes.
I like the idea of the flagpole as well. And I'm not sure, is this, is this position definite? Is that where it has to go?
No, no. I mean, I'm just trying to give options to the board.
Okay, because I'm just thinking if it is a flagpole, it might not be the most ideal place for it?
I was trying to hide it, so now we don't want to be a flagpole, we don't want to hide it.
Exactly. Because, I mean, even hiding it with a tree, you know, trees have a lifespan, and, you know, all of a sudden, the tree's gone, and then you have this big pole. I like the idea of a flagpole. I think it'd be attractive, and we should have a flagpole there, anyway.
Yeah, I was thinking, are we going to have a flagpole down by the road end, maybe perhaps on top of that pump of dune?
Yeah, could do it.
Yeah, we block it. I think that would be, that would probably mitigate having, because that would probably cover the whole beach from there.
Yes.
And so, we wouldn't need the extra antenna on the peak of the building. We just have that one on the side of the building to cover the grass area.
Yes, that's, that's true, yeah. A lot of it depends on where the antennas are placed.
Right.
Most of it depends on where the antennas are placed. And if you place it anywhere near that red circle where the high ground is, you would be able to get away with having one pole. You'd have multiple antennas, probably, two antennas, one facing this way, one facing this way, but you would certainly be able to have one location versus two. I think, you know, if you were to do a flagpole and you wanted to keep it back a little bit and have it in that area, where the, you know, on the parking lot side of the red circle, that's certainly possible. The key is, for me, to get over the obstacles, so we have good Wi-Fi. Like at Main Beach, I mean, you know, it was a good project, a successful project, because I never got one phone call about the Wi-Fi not working up there, because we had clear lines of sight, and it was a robust, robust system that we put in. And in order to have that, that good coverage, we need to be able to at least get around those obstacles. So, we don't want to have something up there, and then people complain that it doesn't, you know, oh, the service is not good.
No, I think we should look into a flagpole, and where the best option to put that would be.
Yeah, to your point, whatever works best, that we can provide the Wi-Fi...
Right.
And have the flagpole. You know, to me, it doesn't necessarily have to be here or there, the flagpole. I just think that that's the best option to go.
Right.
That also incorporates a strong Wi-Fi connection, as you say.
Well, I can, I mean, if the board tells me, you know, we want the pole here, then I can move, you know, I mean, I can make recommendations on where I think it would be good. Obviously, that high point would be best, but if there are visual concerns, you know, we could have the flagpole back where the, where I had marked the blue dot.
The green grass area.
The grass, wherever you want it.
Yeah, there are also other concerns. I know, you know, you gave us these figures here, but if we do a flagpole, that's going to add three or four thousand dollars, which doesn't sound like a lot, but that's, and then if we're going to move it to where it's been suggested, that's going to increase the trenching considerably. And now, so, those are other factors, and I don't know, David, have you gotten estimates for, I think you got estimates for where we're proposing to put it, correct?
The estimates are for the proposed site. We do have limitation on run from a building to, what, here, three hundred feet, is it a match?
Yeah, so, looking, let's look at the picture that I, let me actually grab a copy of myself. So, the, you see where the buildings are? They're the three red lines.
Right.
So, there's one coming from the street. That's where we need to trench in, and Dave's guys are going to do that. We're going to put conduit in for the cable vision, then we're going to place the cable modem in the, in the smaller of the buildings, and then from there, wherever our antennas are, that we have to be within three hundred feet of that. So, the blue dot is in three, within, it's two hundred and, two hundred, it's under two fifty. Dave wheeled it out. So, you know, we've only got another fifty feet from that point, so we have to be, you know, I mean, there are ways of getting around these things, but it's more money each time. And then the other red line is going to the other building, the larger building, where we're going to put those, the two antennas on there. So, let's say you wanted to put a flagpole, I mean, maybe, I would recommend, if we want to keep costs down, keeping it on this side, you know, the north side of the parking lot, the grass area side of the parking lot, so we don't have to cross the pavement, because when we cross the pavement, you know, do we want to cut it? Do we have to go underneath? So, that's going to add cost. So, if we kept it on that side, anywhere in that area, you could put it by the bike rack where the actual green dot is, where Ed actually placed, he could put something there. If we keep it on that side, then your costs are going to be more contained. If we go on the other side, where the high ground is, and put something up near that dune, we've got to get across that pavement, so we can do it.
I think we're all in agreement.
But if you get the height of a flagpole, that will carry you across that high ground, so that wouldn't matter.
Exactly. That's, and from where that blue dot or the green dot is, we can achieve the height we need to get over that dune from that location.
I think we're all fine with, you know, your originally proposed location of the flagpole or the pole at that time, and I think that a flagpole is worth the extra money, the three thousand, but to extend it then underneath the parking lot, the wiring and all of that, they, then it might be more complicated, so. And it might be nice to have the flagpole visible when you first come into the parking lot as an entrance to Georgia.
I think David should look at it again in terms of, we don't want it to be covered by the tree, obviously, if it's a flagpole, so it might have to be moved twenty feet or whatever to get away from the tree, but you look at that again and just show us where you want to put it, and we'll...
Actually, everything east of the, that tree, if it's lower, lower shrubbery, everything needs to be by racks, so that would be, that would be an issue with, with the flag might be...
Okay.
It's actually a pretty good spot for it, in there.
Okay.
Yeah, because my concern, too, was I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to put any kind of a structure in the dune area there. I kind of like it where it's proposed, and if it's going to accomplish the same thing of being able to cover the whole beach, I would prefer it where it's been proposed.
And, I mean, it can be moved even closer to the building if we save money that way. I mean, and when you come around that corner, you do want to see the flagpole, so wherever is the right place to put it, that, you know, obviously, this is the village beach, you see the flagpole when you come around the corner. It doesn't have to be right there, is my point, if you want to move it a little more closer to the building, or, you know, you look at it and see what you think.
Yeah.
Take a look at it, and...
Yeah, we could definitely come up with somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, that would be great.
It'll be good. I'll just go over the cost quick. We've got, obviously, the equipment, which is the antennas, there's, you know, firewall routers and stuff like that that we're going to purchase. That's the first page of the quote, which is the eight thousand five fifty-three ninety-five. The labor to install it, which is the twenty-two eighty-five. And then Dave broke down on the email there, just, you know, his expenses for, you know, we saved quite a bit of money, truthfully, instead of having this with another vendor. The Village would be doing most of the work for the, actually, all the work for the wiring. So we saved a lot of money there, which is, which is good, when we can do it in-house. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so just a note, Becky, we'll put this on our Facebook page and our website so we can get it out there, so people are aware of what the plans are. All right? Okay, so then, do we have an agreement? We'll move forward on it as soon as we get a little more detail and decide exactly where we're going to put it? Or are we, David, are we set with where the blue mark is there now? That that would be the best place to put it, or are you going to go back down there and...
We're going to, we'll take a look.
Okay, all right.
Maybe you could just put a stake in the ground with a, you know, a little, what do you call it? Tie on it, so, and just let us know, and then we'll go down and check it out and make sure it's, it looks like a good spot, but...
I mean, the board will have to approve the work, so you can do that at your next meeting. So as long as you decide before then, you can do it at the meeting on the twentieth.
All right, I just want to make it clear, I want to get this out there because I don't want to spend this money and then have a lot of objections to it. I want to let everybody know that when we first put a pole up there, and it was just a pole, to kind of get an idea of what it would look like, we had some people that were not happy with it because of the way it looked. And I realize this is going to be a flagpole, it's a whole different situation. So I just want to make sure that, since we're not having a public hearing on this, so to speak, that it's on our website, it's on our Facebook page, and of course, the press will report on it so that people that may be concerned or have some concerns can reach out to us.
I just want to comment on that. To your point, we did put a pole up at the head of the beach at Georgica, just a wooden pole, to see what people would think and to give us a visual. And that, I agree, was not pleasant. And I think we were all in agreement that we would have to do something different than that. And that's why I suggested doing the flagpole, because I thought it could be an inconspicuous way to have the wiring of the Wi-Fi. And I don't think there'll be, hopefully, too many people that will object to the American flag and the flagpole at Georgica, just as we have at Main Beach.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much. Find my agenda, okay.
I think I have the first resolution.
Yes, you do. Wait a minute, let me just get mine so I'm on the same page here.
Let me know.
I buried it somewhere. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Adopt Resolution Number thirteen dash twenty twenty, hereby authorizing the issuance pursuant to Sections ninety or ninety, period ten of the local finance law of refunding bonds of the Village of East Hampton to be designated public improvement refunding serial bonds and providing for other matters in relation thereto and the payment of the bonds to be refunded thereby.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None so carried?
Accept Andrew Daige as a new probationary member of the Ambulance Association. Please refer to the February twenty-sixth memo from Ambulance Chief Lisa Chard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None so carried?
Motion to approve the Fire Department's request to use the Emergency Services Building Meeting Room on Sunday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, from eight AM to eleven AM to host a benefit breakfast for the East Hampton High School class of twenty twenty-two. And I'm going to ask, after we vote on this, to have Chief Turza come up and tell us a little bit about it.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None so carried?
Chief?
Your Honor, members of the board. East Hampton High School class of twenty twenty-two. Makes at least two of us in the room feel very old.
That's my daughter's class.
I want to identify which two of us. So a great bunch of young adults. They approached the Fire Department a month or so ago. They're looking for help with a fundraiser, to raise some funds for their class activities in the coming years. They're, they're our sophomores. Fire Department is more than happy to oblige. They're going to be having their pancake breakfast on Sunday, March twenty-ninth, from eight AM to eleven AM, and that's a firm time. Compared to last time, Jamie. Great bunch of kids. They've been working with the members of the Fire Department. We've got a good deal of experience with this. Giving them a good framework, working with their class advisors. They're doing all the work. They're working out some of the finer details as far as the cost and whatnot. Their last, I spoke with their class advisor this morning. They're working on pricing, they'll have pricing for adults, kids, senior citizen discount as well. They're working on their marketing. They'll be getting out to the local papers very shortly, so be looking for that. It's pancakes. Who doesn't like pancakes? I know Chief of Police likes pancakes as well. So it's eight to eleven, it's open to everyone. It should be a good time. And if I could also just piggyback that, with the Fire Department's community outreach, it's this coming Tuesday, March tenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty is the final of our series of community dinners, free dinners that the Fire Department's been putting on in conjunction with the local clergy. We've been doing it all winter long, five-thirty to seven-thirty, open to all members of the public. Free dinners, it's been a great showing so far, and it's a good time for everybody, so.
Is there cake there, too?
I don't know what they had. They had some good desserts last time.
I think there's a special request for cake.
I don't know, it's...
If we're going to have cake, let's have cake.
Ken Coleman's got a little, he's got some... Paul, I just put the fires out. They handle the kitchen. I just, I stay away from it all.
Pancakes.
But again, I thank the board for their consideration, their assistance with a lot of these projects that we've been doing. So thank you.
If you have any influence, you use the room.
Yeah, we're thrilled to let you use the room like that. It's great.
They, students have been coming in, they do a great job and they really get a lot out of it, and it's for a good cause.
And I think it's good for the taxpayers to be able to use this room as well and see what, you know, where their tax money's going, so.
It's a win for everybody at the end of the day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Fire Department actually had done a baseball pancake breakfast a couple of years ago, and it was really a great success. It raised money for the team that was well needed. And I would say there was at least a dozen firemen who volunteered that day to help out and, you know, to prepare the night, the day before. So it's a big contribution and we thank all of the members for that, and thank you for your efforts.
Okay. Barbara, before you read the next one, I just want to welcome Andrew Daige into the ambulance corps and let him know how much we appreciate the fact that he wants to serve this community in that way. So we applaud that.
He's already a member of the Fire Department, so I really have respect for people who do both because it's a lot of time, a lot of volunteer time.
Okay, next, I would like to move a notice to bidders for the lease of Sea Spray Cottage Number Eight, with the bid opening to be held Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty, at two PM at Village Hall. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None so carried?
Notice to bidders for the Town Pond Dredge Project, with the bid opening to be held on Monday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty, at two PM.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None so carried?
Very excited to finally be looking at that.
Yeah.
It's been a long time getting, you know, people don't realize how long it takes to get all the approvals that go through the state and, you know, that it's been a long process.
And the timeline for this project is just, you know, would be full. Just that there would be a lot of planning and staging involved with it. But, you know, for budgetary purposes, to get the bid out now, accept it when developing the new budget, but that the project would not commence until after October first.
Okay, and as I understand it, Becky, it will be two stages?
Yes, it's going to be the first phase, which would be to dredge the southern portion of the pond. And as long as that all goes well, would then do the remaining portion of the pond. Drew Bennett gave a presentation to the board last year, and the DEC has signed off.
Thank you.
Okay, and last is to motion to approve Change Order Request Number One for the Northwest Fire Substation in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars. And that's in reference to a Drew Bennett March third memo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None so carried? That concludes our business for the meeting for today. We're going to enter into executive session to discuss personnel. If there's any reason to reconvene, we'll notify the press. Thank you for being here.
Wait a minute, I have, no, I have a couple of things I want to say.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to just mention, I want to remind everybody, the Facebook page goes live tomorrow morning, so be on the lookout for that, barring any unforeseen circumstances. There are always a few glitches, but we think tomorrow morning, the Facebook page will be live. I also had someone ask me about what the Village is doing to prepare for the coronavirus, COVID-19. It's officially called. I had a conversation with administration over at the hospital and also with the Village Ambulance Association Chief and talked to them about how they were preparing and the supplies and all that. The Ambulance Association is well-stocked. They have plenty of supplies. And we recently trained, actually, last month's meeting, we trained on proper response for calls that could possibly be this virus. And, you know, a lot of the things that we do, we do anyway. So it's just a matter of being more vigilant. Southampton Hospital staff is meeting weekly to go over their supplies and the procedures. They're very well equipped for the foreseeable future. All their emergency personnel have been fit-tested for these N-95 masks, which are the only masks that really protect you. And they said, remind everybody not to be walking around with surgical masks. They really don't help you. That's not what their purpose is. The N-95 masks are what make the difference, and they are really for healthcare personnel who are going to have close contact with the people. The science is not a hundred percent. Patients can be asymptomatic and still spread the disease, which is one of the frightening things about it. Somebody could be walking, it's like Typhoid Mary, you know, who was walking around and giving everybody typhoid fever back in the eighteen hundreds. So people can be asymptomatic. There's so much science that they really have not figured out yet about this disease, and that's one of the things that they're working on now. They continue to review their policies and procedures in concert with Stony Brook Hospital. And they also said to stress that so far, eighteen thousand people have died in the United States from the regular flu this year, eighteen thousand people. So far, ten people have died of this COVID-19. So please get your flu shots. That's the number one thing that we should be worried about now. You can still get a flu shot if you haven't already had one. And even if you get the flu after you've been vaccinated, your chances of dying are much less if you've had the flu shot. So we encourage everybody to get their flu shots. We encourage everybody to wash your hands because frequent hand washing is the absolute best defense against this and every other virus. I volunteer at the hospital, and we actually have to pass a test every year on hand washing. We have to show them that we know how to properly wash our hands, and there's a machine that you do it under. So it's a serious thing, and everybody that works at the hospital has to pass this test. So remember to wash your hands. Teach your children to wash your hands. They don't know yet how long this virus actually lives on a surface, so you can pick it up by your hands and then spread it to yourself. So just frequently wash your hands, especially if you've been out in public. Make sure when you get home, you wash your hands carefully. Other than that, you know, if you have any respiratory symptoms, they say, please contact your local doctor. If you can talk to them before you come to the ER, that way, you're not bringing it into the ER if you do have some problem. They want to be able to have your local doctor look at you first and decide. They have already got plans for an isolation room and all of that, but, you know, better to know ahead of time if you're coming in with something and the local doctor can notify the ER, so. So that's the, I wanted to give that update on that because somebody did ask me about it. The other thing I wanted to ask you all was, I've been having, I've had this idea for a while now about forming an environmental advisory committee. You know, we put in the water stations last year, which was such a great idea. And I think, you know, there's been discussion about recycling and, you know, whether or not we can recycle certain things, and should we have recycling bins? It seems to me that it would be a good idea to have an advisory committee made up of a couple trustees and some people, some residents that could really focus in on environmental issues. We just bought the new, or in the process of buying the new hybrid vehicle. We have bought some hybrids in the past, but I think there's more out there that can be done. So I would like to talk about putting this environment advisory committee that would maybe meet quarterly, come up with some ideas that they could pass on to us, and then perhaps we can move forward in some positive ways for our environment. How do you feel about that?
Great, I think it's excellent idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's not an awful lot we can do on the Village level. I think that most of it is at the town level and above.
I think there are still some more things we can do. We did do some things to make it easier for solar, for people to, you know, an easier process for them to go to for approval for solar systems. I think there are some things like that that we just haven't thought of yet that maybe, you know, if you get a group of people that are really environmentally conscious and interested, they might be able to come up with some other things that we can do as a village to encourage more efficiency.
Okay, yeah, I agree with it. I think we should do it.
You good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. If anybody out there in the public would be interested in serving on a committee like that, if you have a special interest, just let us know. You can contact me through, or Becky, or any of us through the Facebook page, actually. Just post on there that you're interested and we'll be in touch with you. And that's it for me. Oh, I just did want to remind everybody that we're going to have hours at Village Hall the first Saturday in April, where people can come in. We will be posting it on Facebook and on our webpage, the hours. It'll probably be eight to ten or nine to eleven. We haven't quite focused in on that yet. But it'll be an opportunity to come in to meet with people from different departments. You know, there'll be a representative from the Police Department there. There'll be a Village Board member, and probably the mayor will be there. At least two Village Board members will be there. Just an easy way to come in and communicate with the Village, ask questions. If you have questions about, you know, you want to put up a shed in your backyard, how do you go about doing that, and we can advise you about, or the Building Department can advise you about what the process is and what you have to do. So that's going to be the first weekend in April, on Saturday. I don't have the date in front of me, but whatever that first Saturday is. And just watch Facebook for that, so you'll have more information on that, okay? And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone in the audience?
I would like to personally thank you all for such an expeditious movement on our behalf and the business community's behalf. This started a little bit around the holiday season, Tiger and Rose. And here it is, just March, and you're thinking about making all this happen in April. So we are internally grateful, and there is, with government, ways to make things happen immediately. And we really are very grateful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yes? Can you just go up to the...
Sorry, that's for the vast, vast TV audience that has to, has to see you.
I would just like to repeat the thanks of my good wife. And thank you all for your expeditious handling of a possible thorny problem.
Thank you, very much appreciated. All right, anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
To executive session, right?
Yes.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stand adjourned.